Go ahead and say the pledge of allegiance together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, would you like to take the roll, please?
Commissioner Nesbit?
Here.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Here.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Present.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Present.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Chairman Wiley?
Here.
Thank you and welcome. For those that would like to speak tonight, I just want to remind you to address all comments to the chairperson. Is there anybody in the room tonight that thinks that they would want to speak tonight? You would want to speak tonight, then I'm going to go ahead. You would need to come to the podium to ask any questions or to say yes or no at the appropriate time, I would call you up. So if you think you would like to speak, go ahead and stand now. If you would please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before the commission tonight? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. You may sit. All right, the first item on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda.
Madam Chair. How move we approve the consent agenda?
No, Chair. I'd like to pull case 24-320-08.
All right. We have, do you want to make a motion on it to approve?
No, I want to make a...
Second.
Yeah, but second on...
Okay. Would you take the roll on that?
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman Wiley?
Yes. All right, Commissioner Nesbit?
This related to the staff. On this plat plan, did we get in there the parking issue problems that we're addressing when this was brought up to us?
This is regarding case number 243200A, final plat on the McBee Acres.
Yeah, in the driveways and sidewalk section of the staff report on page three, that condition of the approval for the rezoning planned unit development was addressed. So the applicant will have to meet that condition from the original approval of the planned unit development.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because honestly I missed it, so I wanted to make sure that was taken care of.
Absolutely, and the final development plan furthermore is administratively approved and reviewed. In the final development plan will have to be in conformity with the planned unit development, the preliminary development plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to go ahead and approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve case 24320-08, final plat at McBee Acres.
I second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Call the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. We still need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No, we already did that.
You already approved the...
We did?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, you approved the consent agenda, which at that point only included the planning commission minutes, and then separately you just approved case number 24-320, so...
All right, thank you, Chairman.
You're good to go.
For that. Sir, you had a...
Can they all talk closer to the mic?
This is case 2412505, Infinity Apartments, applicant Clint Perkdahl, J.C.
Yes, make sure your mics are on and that they're pulled up.
Stand here.
Thank you, sorry about that, sir. We'll try to be more loud to that.
Weston Construction. The actions are rezone from C2 to R30 PUD and approve a preliminary development plan.
All right, I want to open the public hearing for our first case.
So what we're looking at here is the vicinity map roughly in the northwest corner of East
Excuse me.
37th Terrace and Jackson Drive, as you can see in that red square there.
We have continued case number 2412505, rezoning PUD at 19300 East 37th Terrace.
So this is the zoning map. That big brown square there, you see that is Pepperwood Apartments, the hospital there
Staff, could we have your report, please?
Hold on a second, we're having a little technical issue. to the south. The area within the pink identified as this property is, would be the location of Infinity Apartments, the Independence Apartment project there to the west, and then you have a nursing home there to the southeast, and of course, Independence Commons with the movie theater and other box stores there immediately to the southwest. Of course, all zoned commercial, C2 in that vicinity. Comprehensive plan envisions this area to be residential in use, consistent with the development already in existence to the east and the west. And this is the notification area of notification. This is a request by J.C. Weston Construction to construct a 300-unit apartment complex at 19300 East 37th Terrace South. The property has never been platted. In 1974, the property was rezoned from R1 to CP2 with a site plan being approved in 1975. This project was never developed, the site, and this undeveloped tract got its current size and configuration with the creation of the 39th Street Terrace and, of course, the Jackson Drive. The proposed Infinity Apartments originally submitted as Jackson Apartments is a 304-unit multifamily development consisting of four separate, four-story buildings with an underground parking or under-the-building parking. The proposed development on 11.67 acres is located in the northwest corner of Jackson Drive and 37th Terrace. The development will include a clubhouse, a pool, and a mix of regular parking, covered carport parking, and garage spaces. The development will have a density of 25.7 units per acre, and there will be 6.194 acres of open space. The applicant's 11.67-acre property at its southern end is more open and level, but as you proceed to the north, it becomes steeper, more wooded, and descends toward a railroad right-of-way down in the ravine, trees lining the two ravines going to the northeast and northwest, and there's a stand of trees abutting the apartment complex that lies to the west. The vicinity of the proposed development is dominated by retail, institutional, and multifamily residential uses. To the south across 39th Terrace is Big Box Retail, then to the southeast across the intersection of 37th Terrace and Jackson Drive is the Center Point Medical Center. East across Jackson Drive is an apartment complex. To the west lies a nursing home, and further west, another apartment complex. North of the property, down the steep embankment, again lies the railroad right-of-way and heavily wooded area. The project should achieve livability, access, health, and safety through a quality-built envelopment. The project will improve visual appearance and improve the infrastructure and facilities and stabilize and revitalize the neighborhood. The relevant guiding principle from the comprehensive plan would be that it facilitates development of a connected, mixed-use neighborhood zoning. The applicant proposes R3 PUD zoning, which allows multifamily housing, of course, other uses like daycare, government facilities, churches, utilities, cemeteries, and agricultural uses. The current C2 use, general commercial, allows for numerous retail office, restaurant bank, business and other personal services, and hotels, nursing homes, daycare centers, government facilities, funeral homes, schools, colleges, veterinary clinics, sports and entertainment facilities, medical facilities, and of course, agricultural uses. On this property, there are no apparent historic or archaeological issues. Water, sewer, and electrical services are available on the property. Utilities to service development will be installed along the private drive aisles to serve each proposed building as shown on the preliminary development plan. Water and sewer lines will be provided with one tap per building for each utility. Proposed easements will be provided for the public utilities at the time of final plating. So here's a picture of the site plan so you can get a good layout of the site. We're looking actually with west being on top, so you're looking toward the Independence Apartments there on the top there. You've got 37th Street over to the, 37th Terrace over to the left, and then Jackson Drive down below. See access off of Jackson Drive as well as 37th Street, and this, and these buildings sort of are arranged in a circle with your amenities and parking and other structures in the center. So the property is neither in the floodplain nor is it near a stream requiring accompanying stream buffer zones. The property will drain to the northeast where a detention bond will be cited. BMPs are required per the city's design criteria and will be implemented with this, on this development. Design will abide by the MARC APWA manual of best management practices. The proposed project will consist existing peak flows, proposed peak flows, design storm, CFS, ten-year, and then existing volume, design storm of the new multifamily homes and open space, parking, clubhouse, pool, and an onsite detention basin. Storm wire runoff from the proposed development will be controlled utilizing the existing onsite detention basin. The basin has been determined in preliminary analysis to have a storage capacity for the development's increase in runoff. The basin's control structure will need modifications to control the 10- and 100-year storm events, peak release rates per the city's requirements. BMPs will be required to treat water quality and will be designed per the city's requirements. Access to the Infinity Apartments will be from 37th Terrace and Jackson Drive. 37th Terrace entrance will be at the southwest corner of the property, while the proposed entrance off Jackson Drive will be further north than the existing road cut that's near the intersection. Both drives connect to a looping parking lot where all but the south lot are behind the building lines of the apartment structures. All maneuvering aisles will be two-way, and none of the parking aisles are more than two cars deep. They will have landscaped incaps and islands. The UDO requires 564 parking spaces, that's 441 based on unit counts and 123 additional visitor spaces. The 304-unit apartments would have 500 parking spaces, 48 for the studio units, 360 for the one- and two-bedroom units, and 32 for the four-bedroom units and 60 other visitors. This results in a 1.64 parking spaces per unit that is equivalent or greater than industry standards and the number, and the number of other apartment developments in the region. Although the development is 64 spaces short of the new requirements, the site is constrained by topography of the site and the existing right-of-way and the existing detention basin that must be sized not only for this development but for the adjacent developments as well. The UDO allows for approval of an alternative parking plan. The applicant submitted a parking letter outlining this alternative parking plan. Staff supports the alternative parking plan given the site constraints mentioned above. A complete sidewalk will be required along 37th Terrace. And then there was a traffic study. The traffic study summarizes the anticipated traffic impacts of the proposed Infinity Apartments development with the following. Left turn and right turn lane warrants at the driveway intersections were analyzed in conjunction with MODOT's access management guidelines, and no turn lanes would be warranted at either site driveway. It should be noted that the site plan shows a full-access driveway that would require a medium brake along Jackson Drive. Although the northbound left turn lane is not warranted due to traffic volumes at this intersection, a median brake, a median brake without a dedicated turn lane is not recommended as the drivers would not be expecting a left turn driver slowing down to make a turn on a divided highway without a left turn lane present. There is an existing bridge just north of the intersection and a significant retaining wall on the east side of Jackson Drive that would make it difficult to construct a northbound left turn lane. If a dedicated left turn lane is not feasible, the driveway access should be limited to ride-in, ride-out access. In general, acceptable traffic operations can be expected in and around the proposed development with the addition of the Jackson Apartments development. The development traffic will have minimal impact on traffic operations in the study area, and no improvements would be required. As far as amenities, provided amenities will include an outdoor swimming pool and a clubhouse. The applicant provided a mini package exhibit, and staff recommends additional amenity in addition to the pool and the clubhouse that will work, and staff will work with the applicant to ensure that amenities are provided at the final development plan stage. The city does not have any capital improvements planned near this area at this time. Elevations, the four proposed apartment structures will be arranged in the circle. Building D will front South Jackson Drive with the parking behind. Building C will set much further back from the right-of-way of East 37th Street South with its parking between it and the roadway. Buildings A and B will be on the far side of the circle and arranged around the interior parking lot loop and the pool and the clubhouse that's in the middle. There will be four carport structures as well. There will be 76 units per building. A mix of apartments will be 44 studios, 128 one-bedroom, 168 two-bedroom, and 16 three-bedroom. The four-story apartment structures will have three colors of fiber-lap siding, hardy architectural panels, prefinished fiber siding board and batten, leadstone veneer, and a standing seam metal roof. Additionally, there are white and dark bronze various fiber trims, cast stone banding, and metal coping and trims. The rear basements of the buildings will have exposed garages. The clubhouse and the carports will mimic the architectural style of the apartment buildings utilizing the same fiber cement walls, stone veneer wainscotes, and pitch roofs with architectural shingles. So here's a view of what that would look like. Above shows the side without the garage and then the exposed garage down below. And then these are the ends of the building. And then these are some of the other structures, carports and garages and clubhouse and whatnot. The buildings will be as high as 48 feet tall on their exterior lot line sides opposite the sides with their exposed garage entries and just under 60 feet when accounting for the tuck-under garages. The maximum building height allowed in the R3 district is 35. The UDO allows for one foot of increase in the building height for one foot of building setback beyond the minimum required. Thus, the only building that does not meet the building height requirement is Building D, i.e. the building closest to Jackson Drive. As a trade-off to the height, the applicant proposes to increase the street trees along Jackson Drive, which will provide shade along the sidewalk but also soften the heights of this building. As part of the PUD approval process, the UDO allows the PUD plans to deviate from strict compliance with specific standards. Staff supports the building height deviation for Building D. The easternmost building, i.e. Building D, has a setback from Jackson Drive right-of-way of 16 feet instead of the 50 feet required. Staff supports the setback deviation for Building D as the applicant proposes to significantly increase the landscaping along Jackson Drive to minimize any effects. The preliminary development plan indicates landscaping as required per UDO. The buffer is required for the southwest portion of the site adjacent to the Centerra Springs development. The final development plan stage, staff will ensure compliance with the landscape provision of the UDO. So here's a profile picture of, of the Building D from the grade coming off of Jackson Drive on the left, and then the actual setback is shown on the right. And this is the landscaping plan, so you can see the substantial landscaping that's been put up front around Building D and along the Jackson Drive corridor there, as well as all the internal landscaping for the incaps and islands that are within the interior parking lot areas. So this is a picture from across the street looking toward Pepperwood, so you can see the relation of that structure to, to what would be built on, over on the west. This is the site looking west. You can see the Independence Apartments back there off to the west, and this would be behind here where the trees are is roughly where Building D would be. And this is looking back toward the apartments across Jackson Drive to the east up on the hill. And then this is that, the northbound view, looking back toward the bridge with the property to the left. And then this is the interior of the property west of Jackson Drive looking north, back toward the railroad track area and the woods to the north. This is looking directly back east toward that intersection of 37th Terrace and Jackson Drive, and you can see Center Point off to your, off to your right there. And then this is actually halfway down the block on 37th, looking into the property. And this is what's across the street, the backside of the box stores and the shopping center development there in Independence Commons. This is looking west toward the nursing home and also the back of the box stores there as you can see. And then this is directly at the nursing home that's located to the northwest, west of the property. Staff recommends approval of this resounding request and preliminary development plan with the following conditions. Number one, a building setback deviation will be granted for the easternmost building, that's i.e. Building D, to allow the building to be setback 16 feet from the Jackson Drive right-of-way instead of 50 feet. Number two, a building height deviation shall be granted for the easternmost building, i.e. Building D, to allow the bill, the building to be as high as 50 feet tall on the non-garage side and 60 feet tall on the garage side. Number three, in exchange for the building height and the building setback deviations, the significant landscaping as shown on the landscape plan will be provided, or shall be provided. Number four, the applicant shall provide an additional amenity in addition to the pool and the clubhouse. Staff will work with the applicant to ensure that amenities are provided at the final development plan stage. Number five, the final development plan should provide elevations for masonry trash enclosures. And number six, the office/clubhouse and the apartment buildings and units within will be addressed on the final development plan as prescribed by the Community Development And that concludes my presentation. I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
Great, thank you, Steph. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Chair.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Okay, so we have these UDO things, and we're going to throw half of them out, it looks like, to get this property in here, is that correct? Since it says 564...
side and sixty feet tall on the garage side. Number three, in exchange for the building height and the building setback deviations, the significant landscaping as shown on the landscape plan will be provided or shall be provided. Number four, the applicant shall provide an additional amenity in addition to the pool and the clubhouse. Staff will work with the applicant to ensure that amenities are provided at the final development plan stage. Number five, the final development plan should provide elevations for masonry trash enclosures. And number six, the office/clubhouse and the apartment buildings and units within will be addressed on the final development plan as prescribed by the Community Development And that concludes my presentation. I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
Great, thank you, Steph. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Chair.
Commissioner Asfaw?
Okay, so we have these UDO things and we're gonna throw half of them out it looks like to get this property in here, is that correct? Since it says five hundred and sixty-four parking spots and you're only gonna let five hundred go, so I mean, that's a problem there. Then also, you said the setbacks because they're getting taller, they're too close to the road. I mean, we got these rules for a reason, I'm guessing, so why are we not abiding to
First, with the road issue, it's a little confusing in that we actually have a area of city property. It actually is between the right-of-way and the property line for this building. So in a sense, it's closer to about forty-four feet, but in actual, because of where his property line is, that's why that's stated as sixteen.
So you're saying...
Okay.
So basically, it's farther away than what actually is being stated than what you're saying.
I'm just saying that his property line isn't actually up against the right-of-way. So there is a hunk of city property that's actually between the two of those. So that somewhat explains that.
But we're saying it's supposed to be fifty feet, but you're saying with the city property and his property, it's only forty-four feet?
Yes, that's correct.
So we're six feet off, okay. What, no, I'm back to the parking. I mean, that's why we set these rules for parking. Did we say anything about electric car parking or anything like that's in the plan or anything?
No, we did not.
I mean, because I mean, that's things we gotta look at and I'd ask you guys to look into things like that to make sure this happens to these new places come along. Plus also, I thought our housing study says we were maxed out on new apartments for the City of Independence, and now we're gonna add another five hundred units when we were supposed to be maxed out already. So I don't understand that either. You guys didn't bring that up either. What's the consensus on that?
I can probably answer some of that question. So if you recall, we did do a housing study update and with some of the new numbers and with some of the new trends in housing to get kind of an idea as to where that was. We were not actually at the max. We were getting close. That's why we wanted to make sure that we were on the right track. One of the things that the updated housing study did talk about is, I want to say it was closer to about six hundred and fifty units were still in terms of an apartment-type development. That was still within the range that we could continue to see before we get to saturation. Keep in mind though, you know, when we talk about six hundred and fifty or whatever that number was, it's kind of an average. I mean, it's not necessarily exactly gonna need to be six fifty. It could be slightly over, slightly under, but that was kind of the number before we started really having to look at, are we getting saturated with that? So this still fits within the window of what the updated housing study allowed.
Okay. Now, on the parking aspect, are we on electric cars or...
Well, you know, there's obviously a lot of challenges. We don't require it in our code in terms of how electric charging stations would work for multifamily-type apartments. There are still challenges. I mean, we are actually adopting the new 2024 Energy Code. There's some requirements in there that talk about charging stations and fire protection and things like that, so it is not something that we're prepared to adopt yet. However, there are still some challenges with how apartment buildings can handle, you know, charging because ultimately, you know, there are spots that people may have to pay for if they're garaged or covered under carports, then there are open spots. But it is not something that we have actually put in the code yet as a requirement. As to the, you know, the number of parking stalls, keep in mind, the code does allow for the applicant to submit a study if they feel that our code is too overbearing and they can come back and provide us some proof that the developments that they've had in the past, that the number of parking stalls that they're providing is sufficient for their development. Understand, you know, one of the reasons we wanted to make sure we had things like visitor parking was because we didn't want people parking on any of the side streets. In this situation, they don't have that option. I mean, they can't be parking on Jackson Drive or Thirty Seventh Street. So the development and the developer is confident that the parking will indeed occur inside their development. And so that is the report they submitted. We did review it and as Brian mentioned, staff was sufficient with what they submitted.
Okay.
Chair, I have a question for staff.
Commissioner Asfaw?
This forty-four-foot strip that the city owns, how's it being cared for right now or is it being cared for like mowing?
I would have to check with parks, but I believe that's a city-maintained area.
Is it gonna continue to be a city-maintained area or is this unit...
I'm not aware of any intent to sell it at this time, so I can't really answer that question, but my assumption would be if they did, then obviously that maintenance would transfer to a new owner, but...
But there's no requirement for them to do that?
No, no, not to transfer.
So the city has this piece of land, I'm assuming because there was a thought that maybe later on that street would be widened?
Well, my, there's a lot of weird pieces of property the city has related to the Jackson Drive development, and I know that there are several other areas where we have right-of-way that never became part of Jackson Drive. So, you know, all I can tell, I wasn't here when they actually acquired it, but I know that there have been areas that we have as far as when we worked with the railroad to get the railroad crossing approved with that bridge, and this could be part of that reminiscence of when that occurred back when Jackson Drive was originally designed and developed, so...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Brian, quick question. And actually, Rick and I spoke about it, so maybe he wants to chime in, but just the height of the building. I live in that area and so I am frequently up and down Jackson, and this particular property, I realize, is quite sloped. But I've always thought Pepperwood was extremely tall. So any estimation with the additional feet, just looking kind of skyline-wise, where this might, will it be as tall as Pepperwood? Will it be shorter from a visual?
I mean, it...
Because I know it's gonna be taller than what we allow.
I mean, it, from what I can tell just looking, I mean, it looks like there's at least fifteen feet of height up from the street, and so they're at thirty-five at the top of that pitch of that roof. So we're talking upwards of fifty.
I was gonna say, I think in short, we believe it'll be similar in height.
Okay. Okay, I'm good with that. I was, I know we don't have a tape measure out there, so, all right.
We thought about going out and taking some measurements from the angle of the sun and everything like that, but we didn't do that, sorry.
And then the other thing, I'll just clarify, so the parking is one point eight?
So the parking, the effective parking ratio is one point six four, is that right?
So still more than one and a half cars per person?
Still more than one point five.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any further questions from anyone? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward? Sir, I don't believe you were sworn in, is that correct?
No.
Okay, would you please raise your right hand? Do you promise to tell the truth to the best of your ability to the commission tonight? If so, say I do.
I do.
All right, thank you. State your name and where you're from and anything you want us to know about the project.
Clint Burkeville, Olathe, Kansas. So we are local from Olathe. The staff report was very comprehensive, so I don't really have anything to add on that. A couple of things I would talk about that, some of your concerns. I have no problem adding some electric vehicle, electric charging stations in there. I mean, I think that would be easy to do. Another thing about the maintenance on that city provided, I'm assuming that's just mowing? Is it just grass, I'm assuming? I mean, that'd be a very easy thing to, if that was a, you know, a deal breaker, that would be a very easy thing for our maintenance people as they're doing the apartment building to take over maintenance of that, especially if it's just something to do with grass. But my thing on this site, the other thing, while...
Sir, can you speak a little closer to the mic? I have a request. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want me to repeat any of that or do you got that? The other thing I would say is part of the reason why we are adding or asking for some deviations is because the site is pretty steep. It's kind of challenging. And I would also say that it's probably the reason why it hasn't developed in the last fifty years. And it's zoned as C2 right now, but that topo would make it, you know, just almost impossible to get hardly, you wouldn't be able to get probably over five or ten percent of the site used for that without just doing some massive fill. And all of these are reasons why, you know, it's in a great location right across from, you know, the hospital, close to Thirty Ninth, you know, and even a little farther out, close to, you know, all the big thoroughfares. So it's a great site, but I think just topo-wise, it's tough and that's why it's not developed. So a few of these things to make it work, we had to ask for. Nobody wants to ask for, you know, deviations, but some of them we just had to. But I think with the new North Point Industrial, you know, coming in, phasing in over years, I think we're just in a really good place to provide, you know, housing for that. And also, you know, we're not going into a place where we're upsetting neighbors or going into residential neighborhood or anything. I think it's, you know, just made for this, made for this use.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioners, any questions for the gentleman?
Yes.
All right, sir, go ahead.
Basically, on your undercover parking, what size height-wise are you gonna make those? Will they be able to do trucks or just cars only?
I don't know what we have right now. Does anybody have the...
You ready to come up to the...
Yes, sir.
It's all yours.
I will need to swear you in, sir.
Understood.
All right, just raise your right hand and do you promise to tell the truth the best of your ability to this commission tonight? If so, say I do.
I do.
All right, state your name and your address, please.
Jason Osborne with Roseman and Associates, one five two six Grand Boulevard in Kansas City, Missouri. Am I speaking loud enough?
You are.
I have a short problem, so...
Thank you.
If I aim this down, he'll never be able to speak again. So the question is pertaining to the size of the garages. Yes, we're a big believer that vehicles, all vehicles should be able to get into the garage, so they're not undersized and that's on purpose. I think you'll find that the size of those garages are intended to accommodate your traditional F-150, if you're a GM person, the fifteen hundreds. So does that answer that question for you?
That answered that question. My next question's gonna be, you guys got some nice pictures in our packet. Will it look like the pictures? Where'd these pictures come from? Another place that you have already or...
So a lot of this really, in a pre-development plan, is really meant to be somewhat conceptual. Part of that is working with the city staff, part of that is working with the vision of our developer partners, and then of course, looking at how those fit. And again, I represent the architecture team on this. So the pictures are meant to be somewhat reflective of what the end result will be. You won't see a tremendous deviation from that. Whether we paint it blue, yellow, or green, that has yet to be determined, at least unless I'm missing something from our team. But no, those renderings are meant to be reflective. The photographs that you see are also some reflective from projects that we have done locally here. Our architecture firm has been in business since nineteen eighty-seven. We've done an awful lot of products that you would see in a variety of different asset classes all over town. So it's meant to be reflective of the end result, yes.
Okay. My next question's gonna be, I didn't hear or see anything about rates. Do we not know rates yet on the...
So the formal rates have yet to be determined. I don't want to speak for Clint, but these are market-rate apartments. When we first entered into the discussion with the local staff, the question was, what will these be affordable according to LI-Tech program? And they will not. They are meant to be a market-rate product.
Okay, I like that idea.
Yes.
Let's see, what was my last question? I just, it looks nice. I'm not against it. That's perfect probably for this location. I'm the one that's always worried about parking and people getting in and out, and I always have questions about that. So that's why I bring that up. And then right now, I'm big on the electrical, why we have in the city, put proposals in there for making sure that we get electrical outlets, because that's what everything's come to in the future, what it looks like, so...
They're fair concerns. You know, with the parking concerns, you know, we met the original intent of parking as a ratio to the unit types and those requirements for the City of Independence. Where we fell short on the asking of a variance was on the additional zero-point-four spaces per unit as a visitor parking requirement. It's a separate and additional requirement as we understand it. And so we met the original tenants for the parking as it relates to your residence, and we do have some additional parking for those. We also base some of that variance, as Clint just spoke to, because of the topography of the land surrounding it, you know, we'll build exactly what we're supposed to build, but we also understand that with no street-side parking, that we had to pay attention to some additional spaces. We also base some of those additional spaces on other developments that don't have that additional point-four space. And we were able to determine that all of those within the last two to five years did not have any additional complaints of availability for parking for residents and their visitors.
Okay, that's good. My other question, I remember now, what kind of timeframe are we looking at for this thing to be completed? If we get approval through, say, the next couple of months here? Are we looking year, two years, three years?
And I would say, and again, I don't want to speak for Clint, but I would say we would want to begin as quickly as humanly possible. So we wouldn't delay this by multiple years, if that's what you mean.
That's why, I mean, because...
Correct.
I mean, some of them, we've already been approved, and I know they're being delayed, and I'm trying to figure out, okay, are we gonna prove this and wait three or four years before something happens?
I mean, unless something catastrophic falls out of the market, I wouldn't say so. I think some of the reasons for delays are, I would say, environmental conditional too, not just the development piece, but interest rates, insurance rates, cost of construction, type of construction, et cetera. So there's a lot of variables that are impacting other developments, but we're not anticipating those.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the speakers? All right, thank you very much.
Wonderful, thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone who would like to speak in favor of this case? All right, would anybody like to speak in opposition of this case? Anyone would like to speak in opposition? Right, seeing none? Any final questions for the staff? Commissioners?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Asfaw?
Of course, has nothing to do with this, but it's just out of curiosity, is there a requirement for a certain number of dumpster enclosures in areas per unit?
I do not remember seeing that in code. It's probably something that we should add.
Well, I just, I know this is very small and I'm getting older and it's hard to see, but it looks like there's one dumpster enclosure, and maybe there's not. I just, it just piqued my interest as to why there'd be one dumpster container for something this big.
We probably should look into that. You'd have to walk some distance from some of those buildings, so, yeah.
Okay, well, of course, that's gonna take up some more space there. Could we at least, the other question was, even though there's questions up in the air about the electric cars, can't we at least maybe make a requirement that maybe before the asphalt's done and all this and that, that there be some infrastructure that would allow easy facilitation for this to be put in? So they don't have to tear up the asphalt. They don't have to try to trench on the side of a cliff, you know, or something like that, so... Does that make sense?
Yeah, I could ask departments about that.
Well, if you would ask them, I think that... Well, if you would ask them, I think that that might be something that they'd want to consider.
So Commissioner, would you like to add a condition on the trash?
I think that's a good idea.
Chair, have the applicant back, come back up and have him answer how they do the trash.
Yeah. Could you please?
All right. Come on up.
Because some of them, I know, they put trash out and they have people go around picking it up daily. I don't know if they do things like that or not.
Maybe that's the way it happens. I, I'm sure you thought about it. It just, this isn't readily apparent.
Fair question, and, and, and I'm in your same boat. The smaller the print, the harder to read.
Yeah.
I'm glad we can zoom in digitally nowadays. No, we, we are intending to provide a valet trash service. I think some of the things that would plague, say, maybe our older inventory and other types of products where we see things just stacking up, that's not what this community will have. So we have, it's not one small dumpster. If you're envisioning that little tiny box, the truck comes over and throws, that's, that's not what this dumpster enclosure includes, and it will include a valet trash service.
Okay.
So we don't expect an issue with trash, because we do think about that on every project. Absolutely. It's a great question.
All right. Thank you.
Could I ask another, maybe not so great question? You don't put any kind of, when people come to rent these units, do you put any kind of restriction on actually how many vehicles they can own, or they can park there?
That's a really great question. I mean, property management, management typically does that. Again, I wouldn't, I would not dare to answer that, but I think there is a whole host of proper vetting processes for an applicant to be allowed to rent at these units. The group that we work with, they've been in the industry for over 30 years, so they've got a very refined process for how they go, take the applicants through the proper process. It's not a just if you show up, you can bring what you want. Cars on blocks, things of that nature is just simply not allowed.
Okay. Well, that makes me feel a lot better about the parking, so.
For sure.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you again for coming back up.
Sure. Other questions?
Appreciate it.
Well, okay. As he said about putting in infrastructure for electric, could that go ahead and be done if we had that on here, or would you guys be able to?
I think there would just be an evaluative process. And I think Mr. Burkdahl suggested that we would look into how and where to provide electric charging stations. So I think the, the, the basic answer is yes. To what degree that would be implemented, it's new as in the moment, so I, I wouldn't want to garner a guess as to how many or where they're located, but yes, I think we'll have an evaluative process and put something in place.
Okay. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Outstanding.
All right. I am going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. I will entertain a motion.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
I make the motion that we approve case 24-125-05, 19300 East 37th Terrace South, with the recommendations by staff with adding the recommendation for putting in electric charging stations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. It's been first and seconded. And will you call the vote?
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley.
Yes. And the motion passes 7-0 in favor. Congratulations and good luck.
And thank you.
The next case on the docket, continued case 24-100-24, rezoning of 2131 South Scott Avenue. Staff, could we have the report?
Okay. This case, 24-100-24, Venue Smart. Applicant is Andrew Mazzella, rezoning from R6 to C2. And that's one of the lots that make up this gentleman's business property located at the intersection there of 23rd and Scott. And you can see where that location is by the vicinity map here on the first page. So the pink area is actually the entire property.
Aaron, do you want to clarify? The, the agenda says it's currently R12. So I'm just, want to make sure we are clear on which one, what it currently is.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is R12.
Good.
That's an error on the, on the, on the overhead.
Thank you for that clarification.
So all the property is, is C2 on the southern portion, except for the northern portion, which is R12. And that is that vacant or semi vacant lot there that you see on the north end of that pink box there. And the comprehensive plan actually shows this whole area as conceived of as residential, although these commercial uses along the 24th Street corridor are existing. And so this is the actual zoning area. You can see the, the, the C2 zoning there in the crosshatched area, the R12 in the white area, and then the particular lot there to be rezoned. And then the, the applicant is needing to rezone this lot so he can do a addition to his existing building. And in, in a redevelopment of this entire property, which is made up of multiple platted lots that had never been platted into one lot. Plating it together into one lot, of course, requires the, the zoning to be harmonized so it will all be C2, and of course, you need the C2 for the construction of the, of the addition. So, and this is that, a conceptual idea of what that would look like on the north end of the property. So, and this is all part, like I said, of a replating that's occurring. He's in the process of doing a minor subdivision. Approval of this minor subdivision is contingent on him being able to rezone the property. And this is the notification area around the property being rezoned. Aerial photograph gives you a little clearer picture of what, what this neighborhood looks like from a bird's eye view. So it's a request by Andrew Rocco Mazzella to rezone property at 2131 South Scott Avenue from R12 two-family residential to C2 general commercial. Prior to adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, in 2009, the property had been zoned C2, two-family residential since 1965. And the property has been a vacant lot basically since the 70s. Venue Smart LLC has been located at this location since 2019. The applicant intends to build a new accessory storage building immediately adjacent to his cleaning services, existing office and storage facility to the south. The applicant owns four platted lots, three are zoned C2 general commercial for the operation on this site, and the fourth is this one to be rezoned that would have the new structure that's placed on this vacant lot. The three most southern lots contain the existing building and parking lot. The existing building abuts the eastern property line and is close to the 23rd Street right away. The west side of the three lots is an unimproved parking lot. The north is gravelled with a small green area near Scott Avenue. It abuts a single-family neighborhood, although it's an R12 two-family. The immediate neighborhood is a single-family homes to the north. Currently, it's the site of trailers and storage containers. The uses would be replaced by new indoor storage facility. The 23rd Street corridor is predominantly a mix of commercial uses. Immediately to the west of the parking lot, across Scott Avenue is Burger King and also an adjacent single-family home. Just five feet east of the existing office and storage building lies the 23rd Street Pawn Shop. North of this corridor and the property, the area is owned R12 two-family residential is again, is predominantly a neighborhood of small, single-family homes. As far as its consistency with the strategic plan of the city, rezoning this property is consistent with the Independence for All strategic plan. The objectives of the plan is to increase economic prosperity of the community and grow business and industry. As far as the comprehensive plan envisions the future land use of this property and the surrounding area to be residential established neighborhoods. Neighborhoods serving commercial developments, parks, and civic uses are also common in This area is uncovered by a subarea plan. R12 zoning classification allows for single and two-family dwellings, as well as other residentially related uses like schools, churches, government facilities, cemeteries, daycare, and different agricultural activities. Currently, the proposed C2 use, the proposed C2 use and the current C2 adjacent includes like office, retail shops, auto repair restaurants, and various, various other related business As part of this project, like I said, the applicant must replat the properties. And the minor subdivision has been submitted that will be able to create a single lot for the operation. Review of this plat, again, is contingent on this rezoning. There are no apparent historic or, or archaeological issues with this property. Of course, all public utilities are already available in the adjacent right of way. The lots are not in a federally identified floodplain, and there aren't any identified city stream buffer zones in the vicinity of this property. The city does not have a capital improvements project planned for this area as well. So we're standing at the edge of Scott, looking east into this northern lot, mostly gravel now. And this, looking a little farther back, looking across Scott, looking at the neighbor single-family home that lies to the north there, adjacent. Our view of it there. And then this is looking up Scott Street and across the house, across the street to the northwest, and looking southwest from the same vantage point, and then 23rd Street intersection to our south. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning request, and I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
Right, Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner O'Neil, go ahead.
What is the business of Venue Smart?
It's a cleaning company, correct?
Yeah, it's a cleaning company, yes.
Any other questions for the staff? Commissioner?
Chair, when he gets this rezoned, if he does, does he have to put up privacy fence then?
Yeah, he has to, if you look at the, the site plan, I-
I did look at it.
Page, there's like a 15-foot area there that is the buffer. He'll have to put up a solid opaque fence, and he'll have to follow code as far as the plantings that go along with that.
What about on the 23rd Street side? Since it's already like it is, does he have to do any planting or anything there?
I mean, he'll have to do some landscaping in conjunction with his parking lot improvement and overall improvement to the property.
Okay. I just check and make sure if that's what he had to do. That's all I was asking. Thank you.
Any other questions for the staff?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Will they be storing chemicals in this building?
I'm not familiar with exactly what products would be used in his operation and maybe they-
My only concern is that you're 17-foot away from a residence on the north side. It's a duplex, of course, but there, there are still people.
Yep.
All right. Why don't we invite the applicant up and he can answer that question? All right. Is the applicant here? All right, sir. Would you state your name and your address for us, please?
My, my name is Erwin Gard. I'm a licensed land surveyor and owner of the Gard Horizon Survey Company in Blue Springs. And I'm here representing the applicant, Rocco, because he is out of town on a business trip, and unfortunately couldn't get back in time to do this. So I am here to try to answer questions if I know the answers.
All right. Could you just make sure that mic is up right on your mouth there?
Is that better?
Yes. And what does he and do you want us to know about this project?
Well, I've read staff report, and I agree with everything they've said. And as you've seen, the exhibits, those are exhibits that I have prepared. So I am somewhat familiar with the project and the, the conditions surrounding it. The only thing I can't answer is your question about chemicals. As I understand it, his business is selling cleaning equipment and cleaning supplies. I do not think he actually does physical cleaning of premises of, you know, business offices or whatever, but he's, he's in the business of distributing and selling, you know, the, the vacuums and the cleaners and the, and the stuff that cleaning people would use. So I would, I don't know, but I would think he would not be storing, you know, cleaning liquids or, or supplies of that nature.
As the surveyor, you were aware of, it looks like a new sidewalk would need to be put in. You don't know of any reason why he wouldn't be able to follow through on the landscaping and the sidewalk.
Rocco has indicated to me that, you know, he will improve the Scott Avenue frontage, you know, with curb and gutter and sidewalk. There's already sidewalks along 23rd Street, so they will be tied together, you know, to make a uniform sidewalk. The, the parking lot itself, of course, will have, you know, curb and gutter entrances, and I mean, it'll be, you know, it'll be finished up. The gravel will go away. It'll be either a building or asphalt parking lot now. So it'll be a much, a much better looking site when he's done.
All right. Anything else we should know?
That's all I have at this point. I'm basically here to answer questions if I can.
All right. Commissioners, any questions? All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone present that would like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone who would like to speak in favor? All right. Anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to this case? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? All right. Seeing none? Any final questions for the staff? All right. I am going to close the public hearing. And I will-
Chair.
-entertain a motion.
I make the motion that we approve case 24-100-24, rezoning 2131 South Scott Avenue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. And I will call the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ash- Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman Wiley.
Yes. And the case passes. Case number 241024, rezoning of 2131 South Scott Avenue, seven to zero. All right, our next case, continued case 241025, rezoning of 2301 South Chrisler Avenue, and I look forward to a staff report on this.
Okay, last week, or I guess it wasn't last week, two weeks ago, gave a staff report on the Chrisler Stadium. There were some questions about the stadium and its, its future and the interest the school district has in it. So I will go over those momentarily here. Again, this is located, for those of you who are looking at the vicinity map, at 23rd and Chrisler, southeast corner of that intersection. The action is to rezone a property, actually, it's two lots that are being brought together from I-1 and R-6 to R-6. And this aerial photograph will help people get a little oriented on this. It's the property there to the east behind the National Guard Armory, as well as the main stadium property itself that debuts 23rd Street and in Chrisler. The Independent School District is entering into agreement with the City of Independence for Chrisler Stadium and the adjoining parcel to the southeast. Recently, there's been very limited usage of this facility by local group, local community groups. So about three years ago, American League team, Legion, League, I'm sorry, American Legion teams were using the stadium Mondays through Saturdays for games, and Van Horn and Truman Varsity Teams would sometimes use the field for their home games. For the summer of 2003, or 2023 season, the last season, Parks and Recreation and Tourism Department operated the stadium. Games were scheduled about a dozen times, but these were only make-up games for the Queen City baseball due to rainouts at the Mill Creek Ballfields. Back in the summer of 2022, there were four or five Saturday and Sunday tournaments, which would have been the last time the stadium generated revenue. The Parks and Recreation Tourism Department has over 1.2 million in identified capital funding needs for the stadium. Despite its history and nostalgia, it's difficult to justify investing that amount of capital in a facility that is used minimally by the public. So in 2023, the Independent School District approached the city about using Chrisler Stadium as a home field for Van Horn High School, but did not want to invest the capital dollars in the facility the school district did not own. Consequently, the IDS superintendent reached out to the city to see if there was a way for IDS to use the facility for the Van Horn baseball team. About one year ago, the city council approved a 12-month lease agreement between the City of Independence and the Independent School District for the use of Chrisler Stadium. At the time, it was explained to the city council that it was the desire of both parties to facilitate the transfer of Chrisler Stadium to the Independent School District. Earlier this month, both parties extended the agreement by mutual consent for an additional 12-month period to allow the development agreement to be finalized. IDS intends to continue use of the facility as a baseball field for Van Horn High School. The district does not intend to demolish the stadium. IDS spent a significant amount of manpower, hours, and money so the facility could be used last season. This included investing significant resources in facility enhancements, including turf maintenance, property maintenance, blight removal, and impending replacement of the outfield scoreboard. Because of these reasons, staff believes the transference of Chrisler Stadium from the City of Independence to the Independent School District is beneficial to the citizens of the city and to the residents of the school district. So for that reason, so we can facilitate the transfer and replat the property, staff recommends approval of this zoning request.
Right, any questions for staff?
I'd just like to thank you guys for checking into that and letting us know. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, I have a question.
Commissioner?
On this particular map, it's showing on the southeast corner of this plat, if you'll notice, there's a, like a, that orange line going across there, looks like there's some kind of structure behind that line in the photograph. What is that? I mean, there's no access to that. There's an access road next to the railroad, but there's no access to get in there. That's blocked.
You're talking at the southeast corner of this property?
No, it's, it's on the southeast side of the ballpark.
Oh, I see where you're talking about.
Yeah, it looks like some kind of structure in there. What is that?
Oh, you mean, I mean, that, that's, that's broken pavement up there on the north part of the
No, it's an old parking lot.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Any other questions for staff? All right, would the, is an applicant here for?
The city is the applicant.
The city? All right. So is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone who would like to speak in favor? All right, please come on up, ma'am, and state your name and your address. Take your time, you're fine. And you can move that microphone down so it's in front of you instead.
Just because I'm not tall like the rest, everybody else. We live there. Our house, our backyard backs up against the armory parking lot.
Chair, sorry to cut you off, but you didn't state your name and address.
Beverly Lentz, 1208 West 24th Street South, here in Independence.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So our house backs up to the armory parking lot. Couple of questions that we had, so I don't know if that's against or for, I don't, it's just questions. Has the armory been notified? Because the last time we talked to them, they hadn't. They didn't know anything about what was going on, and nobody's been there for two weeks, which is kind of scary, because we usually get to talk to them if there's something going on when their parking lot lights aren't working, or the carpool lights aren't working and stuff. So we pay real close attention, and when the homeless try to get in and stuff like that, so. Has the armory been notified, and do they have an opinion? The reason I ask that is because when the armory put in their motor pool, they didn't tell us anything. They came by with their bulldozers and bulldozed one of the oldest oak trees in Independence that had been here since folks started crossing the plains. And they said, too bad, the federal government has priority, this is our land now. So my question is, are they going to do the same thing with volleyball court or with any of the other property? That'd be one question. In light of that, the other question I had even then was environmental impact. Because of how the meadow was there, because of what trees were there when I moved in 30 years ago, we've had deer, we've been able to see two or three different sets of kits be raised for foxes, we've had to trap several groundhogs, and the wildlife has been prolific. You can keep the skunks. They come back for some reason. So we were wondering about environmental impact to that area then and now. We know that since the sewer project was started this past spring, many things have happened with the local flora and fauna. Skunks have moved down to our side of the street. Groundhogs have moved down to our side of the street. Since the, when the, when the school district took over last fall, and we were asking, or last spring, and we were asking about what was going on, and they came in and bulldozed and brush-hogged the property that runs along the creek, and that's the other reason why I was wondering what the environmental impact statement would say, because of the creek that's there, because of the salamanders that are there, because of the copperheads, you can keep them too. That's okay. Put them with the skunks. But what happens to all of that stuff that's, that's running around down there, let alone the homeless population that has taken up residence? So we don't know what to think about trying to put residential folks in that area. Doesn't make sense. I mean, I'm not going to live on a corner of 23rd and Chrisler in a single-family dwelling. And, you know, how is that going to influence or impact the system we already have? Our policemen are already hard-pressed to cover the areas that they have. They can't, they can't respond to illegal fireworks in our neighborhoods. They can't respond when the homeless, six fires we've had in that lot next to the armory, six, that the fire department can't get to because of how the gate is locked off of 23rd Street. Called 911, and I said, first time it was fine, first time it's, what's, what's your address? 1208 West 24th Street, so you know, and there's a fire next to Chrisler Stadium, east of Chrisler Stadium. But do you know where they show up? My house, because that's the address they have. Yeah. Two weeks later, we have another fire, so I call 911. What's the address? I say, I don't know that there is an address. And each time, the fire department has had to use saws or bolt cutters to get in to deal with the homeless and their fires. I don't know how you guys are looking at all of that stuff. These are my concerns. That Little League lot, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, ideal place. You got the new sewer project going in, so you've got the system to be able to small, build a small, whether you make it for vets or homeless, or moms and their kids, build housing that's affordable. Help out the folks that are living in, down Chrisler Avenue that's improving, but still don't have affordable housing. Deal with the vermin that we have, the rats and things. If you're going to do environmental stuff, we need to keep them too. It's kind of like wanting to build things over by Independence Center. I don't begrudge them wanting to do that. But what about our infrastructure? Where's the water for that going to come from? Where is water for all of our new construction going to come from? What new water towers are going to be built? What accessible transportation is available for folks to get to a grocery store? So I want you to consider all those things before you start approving things. I'd like you to ask questions. Is there a buyer? Is there something in place already to build there at Chrisler Stadium? That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you very much. The staff will address your questions in just a moment. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right. City, would you like to address any of the concerns raised?
Yeah. I think with the addressing, we can take care of that with the plating issues. As we do a plat, we, of course, assign addresses.
So one of the questions was, was the armory notified? I'm going to assume they were in the zoning required.
Yes, the state of Missouri in Jefferson City was notified, so the letter actually went to, down to, down to Jefferson City, so.
And then can you clarify for her question? This is a rezoning hearing, so it's about replating, right? Rezoning the, to fix how they are separate zoned right now.
Right, the way, the way our code reads, that, you know, any lot that we create by our plating process must have one zoning. And particularly that northern lot that actually contains the stadium and the, and the parking lot and the volleyball area, actually, it, it's the one that has two zonings. It has an I-1 and an R-6 right now, so we have to fix that. And then we're also, of course, bringing in this other lot as part of this rezoning, so we have one lot. So all of this would be rezoned to R-6.
And then can you clarify those that are listening or will be reading? We are moving it to an R-6 because a school basically can own any kind of zoning, correct?
Right, most of our educational and civic facilities here in the city are, tend to be R-6, tend to be residentially zoned, so that's not unusual. We, we zone a lot of civic locations as R-6.
And then we are looking to sell it to the school district to remain the stadium so they can use it as recreational facility for their Van Horn team?
That's correct.
And also, just to add a little additional context, so that's why we are facilitating the transfer through a development agreement as opposed to just a straight sale, so that the city remains and has some control over the future use of the property. So it's not just, it's not just about transferring it to the school district, it's about making sure that, that, you know, we're preserving an asset for, for future generations, even if it's, if it's a different custodian, being the school district that's taking care of it instead of the city. So we're, we're still working on the development agreement, but that's, that's why we're using that tool. So again, we're not just handing it over and, and, and being done with it, we're, we're working to make sure that it, the intent behind it stays genuine throughout the process.
And I want to publicly thank the staff and those involved. We did have a lot of questions last time. You were very swift to provide answers. I think one that really clarified it was that the school district has already put in a considerable amount of time and dollars to this project because they've been using it. And And going forward, they wanted to spend more money for a large scoreboard, I understand. And so, having ownership of that was probably necessary at that point to put more money in. Is that, am I right in understanding that?
Yes.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, initially, it, it made sense, especially as we started looking at the process, to do, to do the lease, which is what we have in place now, that we, that was extended, I believe in October, because it, it was a one-year lease, and so we, we went ahead and extended it. But, and that was to make sure that they, let them get in there and start sort of operating the facility, and start doing the, you know, looking at what those improvements were going to be, so that they could make sure that it was, like I said, an asset that, that they want to take on. Because as it says in the staff report, there is a considerable amount of, of, you know, deferred, deferred maintenance and capital improvements that do need to be done in order to really bring it, you know, get it to the level that it needs to be. And so, you know, we wanted everybody to go in this with eyes wide open. And so they've spent, you know, again, really the last year, sort of, you know, making improvements and making sure that, that they're, you know, in a, in a position to commit to the asset. And, and they are, so now we're moving it to the next phase.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks ma'am.
And Brian, could you clarify one more thing to the lady's question about not really having a right address and all that? So what you, what you were saying was that by, through the rezoning, and as one property, it will now have an address that puts them in fire example in the right place?
It's not the rezoning, but it's the plating process.
Okay.
That's when we assign addresses. I'll send out letters to different agencies and everything, so they'll know what that address is.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a question too. Why are we limiting access to this property by locking that gate on 23rd Street?
Because of the homeless. I can use that one. I can stop them. No.
So, I'm not a, I can't be certain as to what's going on in terms of the gate, however, so I can't be certain as to what's actually going on with the gate, however, I know we can have a discussion with the fire department if there's a necessary Knox box or something. Typically, when there's any type of locked gate, fire department has a Knox box where they can have a key to open it. So, if that's not the case, then we can certainly talk to them about that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Actually, I have two questions. Could, could it be clarified, there was a statement made that this, the way the city was selling this, that they would still have some control over it? Could I hear that explanation again?
So, what we're working on now is, is a development agreement. So a development agreement sets up, you know, specific conditions, requirements, and, and other, you know, objectives and goals that we do for other sort of, you know, different types of economic development projects. And it essentially, you know, guarantees that, okay, if the city's going to do this, then we know that, that the, the other party is going to, to, you know, do something they're going to do. And so we're utilizing that tool in this situation, rather than just simply transferring the property. And that way, there, there, there's essentially a contract, you know, between the city and the school district beyond the property transfer, that guarantees, okay, this is what they're going to do with the property, and if that doesn't happen, then this is what will happen instead. And so that's, it, it's not about maintaining specific, you know, oversight or control going forward, it's essentially just, you know, having a document in place that guarantees that they're, they're going to do what they say they're going to do with it. And, and if that, you know, were to not happen, then the city would have options on how they wanted to handle that.
Okay. So, let's just say the agreement goes forward and they decide, they decide they want to expand the facility or add another facility there, which might be beneficial, but on the other hand, it's rated R-6, so can they do that in there because of their status as a school district? Or, or how does that go about?
I'll, I'll let planning staff answer about what, what they would need to have in order to expand it.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, they, the school district can build any kind of new facility that's school-related with that zoning. They wouldn't be rezoned.
It's in a neighborhood, it's rated R-6, and say they put a new field in there with a bunch of sports lights. And in the past, that's been a, a question, you know, for the other neighbors, say, well, are you going to turn these lights on and leave them on forever? Or that kind of thing. So it made me wonder how that would be treated if they decided to add some other kind of facility that would be maybe an impact on the neighborhood, and not just a, a school, but like a sports facility and I, and maybe they just follow the, the ordinances and they're fine. I don't know. I just wondered if that comes back before the planners, or they can just say, we're going to do this and...
I mean, our light-related ordinances aren't just specific to a certain zoning, so...
Yeah, I think maybe more directly for your question. So let's say, for example, they wanted to redo something, they would then have to come forward with, whether it's an engineering-type plan, a lighting plan, you know, a luminescence plan, because they have to keep things on their property, that type of thing. So then they would just fall under the code for whatever construction that they'd be building. Kind of leads into the other question that was asked about environmental. So remember, there, there is a very large stream buffer, it goes underground, any development within that area still, still has to follow, excuse me, our environmental section of the code in terms of any type of developments within that stream buffer. So there would still be restrictions on some of the things that they could do there. But any new development would just essentially follow the same type of code that they would if they were putting in another park and in, in any other location.
Even if they were going to build a house on there?
Even if they were going to build a house there, they would have to come forward with that. But my guess is the agreement would probably not include that.
Okay, well, that's reassuring as well. Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions?
I can help with some of this, okay? The gate is there a long time ago. Independence had a Little League team, and they practiced in the Little League lot that is...
The meadow.
The meadow, that, that's one of my other questions then, is when that catches on fire, or when it needs, I'm serious, it's cold now, the homeless are back there, we're waiting for this, you can smell them, you come, come any Sunday afternoon or Wednesday night, and you will smell them burning their trash. We're waiting for the scoreboard to be in flames, because that's where they erected their tarps and their little A-frames and stuff. So do I call the school district now when a fire starts? Do I call the school district, I mean, after the fire department? Who do I call to keep the lot mode? The other thing is, is that that's why that gate is there, one of the reasons why the gate is there, is that lot used to be a great make-out place. We, huh? Yeah. And, and drug use. And the one thing that helped was that because the gate wasn't there, the police would go down and they'd just sit there and do their paperwork and not be bothered. And the kids would go, whoa, well, they weren't all kids. So, and, so that's why that gate is there. They put the gate up af, to, to stop the...
Stop the cars.
Yeah, to stop the cars from going back there and having them do make babies and whatever else they were doing back there. So I, I was, I would like to know if, what the address is that we have to give the fire department when it catches on fire, because that's, next month would be the first one. And how they're going to get in. So anyway, that's why there's a gate.
All right. Thank you ma'am. All right. Brian, could you, when the, when the plating is all changed to R-6, City of Independence would no longer be the ones to call about situations. They would, I assume, call the fire and then give the address for the stadium itself?
Right.
Because it would be one property at that point.
It would be one property. They, the minor subdivisions should probably be completed this month, and I'll be sending out an addressing letter, so it should be getting into the county system pretty quickly.
All right.
Brian, just for clarification, will, will the official new address be the 2301 South Chrisler?
Yes, it will be.
Okay.
A whole property.
A whole property.
The whole thing will have that one address.
All right. That is very helpful. All right. I am going to close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Oh my God. I would like to move case 24100-25, rezoning of 2301 South Chrisler Avenue.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. And I will entertain a vote.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman Wiley.
Yes, and the motion passes case number 24100-25 for 2301 South Chrisler Avenue. Seven to zero. All right, I will call the next case, continued, no, it is case number 24100-26, rezoning of 17200 East Medical Center Parkway. This is located at 17203 and 17221 East 23rd Street. Staff, could we have the report?
Absolutely. So as you had said, this is an application for a rezoning of a property located at the southeast corner of Artimize Road and East Missouri 78 Highway. The applicant in this case is the City of Independence, and the request is to rezone the property from its current designation, R-30 PUD, to C-2. This is a current zoning map of the property. The current zoning of the site is R-30 PUD. The comprehensive plan intends for this property to be continued, to be used for civic uses. There is a small portion of the eastern region of the site that's intended to be used for An aerial photograph of the property, there's three tax parcels that make this site up. And the City of Independence seeks to rezone this property in advance of a proposed justice campus. The application for rezoning consists of three properties, which were annexed into the City of Independence in 1963. Two tax parcels that comprise the majority of the site remain unplatted. The southern region of the site was platted in 1977 as Lot 7 of the Medical Park, Medical Center Park subdivision. When the city assigned zoning district classifications to properties in 1965, this undeveloped site was designated an R-4 classification. In 1980, when the city updated its zoning district map, the designation of this property changed to CP-2, or Planned General Commercial. In November of 2008, the city council approved the rezoning request from CP-2 to R-4 PUD for the Truman Manor Development, which consisted of a 399 multifamily unit development across six buildings. In 2009, when the city adopted the Unified Development Ordinance, the R-4 PUD was converted to R-30 PUD. The project was never constructed. The city has owned this property since acquiring it in 2014. Since that time, the city has repurposed the former medical office building adjacent to 23rd Street into the Independence Utility Center, as well as constructing the Independence Communication Center along Medical Center Parkway. The city seeks to rezone this site to align the zoning with the existing and any future city uses, as well as the existing zoning along 23rd Street and Missouri 291 Highway. The site is roughly 14 acres in size and contains two government buildings, the Independence Utility Center and Communications Center. The site is bound by Missouri 78 Highway to the north, Artimize Road to the west, and Medical Center Parkway along the southern and eastern property boundaries. The property has an easterly aspect, sloping down about 50 feet from the northwest corner to southeast corner. The property is surrounded by a variety of zoning district classifications and uses. To the west, there are a variety of light commercial and general commercial uses along Artimize and 291 Highway. To the south, across Medical Center Parkway, there is a long-term care facility, health services business, and a city-owned park, it would be Clothier Park. To the east, across Medical Center Parkway, there is another business district used primarily for offices. And across 78 Highway to the north, there is a primarily single-family neighborhood. This rezoning meets the city's objective to improve public infrastructure and facilities as it would go, as it would align, excuse me, the zoning with existing and future uses. The comprehensive plan envisions civic uses, which includes government uses. With two existing government facilities already located here, rezoning the site ensures that this development is well-planned and makes the best use of existing infrastructure. The area is not covered by a sub-area plan. The existing zoning classification allows for high-density residential uses. The proposed C-2 classification allows for government facilities and better conforms to lot and building standards with the existing development. There are no apparent historic or archaeological issues with this property. Infrastructure is already existing. This property is not located with any, within any flood plain, nor are there any stream crossings through this property. The 23rd Street Complete Street Project is planned for fiscal year 2025 to 2026 and 2026 to 2027. This project will construct new sidewalks, pedestrian signal upgrades, sidewalk ramps and street trees along both sides of 23rd Street between Lee Summit Road and Missouri 291. Future phases will extend the pedestrian facilities east to Speck Road. And here's some pictures of the site. I included a aerial photograph to indicate where on the site these photographs were taken. This is looking southeast from 78 Highway, looking at the current Independence Utility Center. From the same position, looking southwest into the property. Looking down 78 Highway from the same spot. And here's a different view from the western border of the site along Artimize Road, looking north. Looking east at the face of the Independence Utility Center from Artimize Road. Looking south down Artimize Road, the light commercial district. Looking north from the southern border of the site, from Medical Center Parkway. Looking west at the intersection of Artimize and Medical Center Parkway. Looking east, the opposite direction. You can see Clothier Park on the right, the south side of Medical Center Parkway, and you can just see the Communication Center on the north side. This is from the southeast corner of the site, looking northwest, again, into the property, the Independence Communication Center on the left-hand side of the photo there. Looking west along Medical Center Parkway. Facing north, northeast up Medical Center Parkway, you can see the curve in the road there. Looking southwest, so from the other side, on the eastern border of the site. Looking north up Parkview Avenue, this is a private street. Then this is from Missouri 78 Highway, looking southwest. Looking east down 78 Highway. And finally, looking west up 78 Highway. Staff recommends approval. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning request, and that concludes my staff report.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Nesbit.
When they change this, are they going to give it a new address, or what's the address going to stay?
Yeah, that is a great question. As with the Chrisler Stadium, this site will also undergo an application for a minor subdivision that will combine the two unplatted tax parcels in the one platted lot along the southern region, and an address will be given to the site in general.
So it would be one, it would be one address once all done?
That is contingent, and maybe Rick could speak to this, but the existing site has two government facilities. It has the Communication Center and the Independence Utility Center. So at this current time, both of those front separate streets have separate addresses. And there's, at this time, I mean, the proposed justice campus is contingent upon several factors.
Yeah, several buildings, that's what I was trying to figure out, is there going to be more than one address?
Yeah, when, when we address properties, we usually, there's, you know, there's, there's a site this address that's for the actual parcel itself. And then we often have additional addresses for different buildings.
Right.
And so the, I assume that's most likely what will occur, that individual structures will have their own address.
Okay. So each building will have its own address, and bigger, where it faces probably off which street it goes off of.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not going to be, it's, are they going to break it up then? Into smaller plots, or is it going to still be one plot?
As far as I understand, and again, this is contingent upon several factors, we have not received an application for a minor subdivision at this time. It is my understanding that a minor subdivision will combine the three existing tax parcels and lot together. But that is a great question, and we'd have to look into that.
So we don't know?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Right, any additional questions for staff? All right, is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone who would like to speak in favor? All right, is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition of this case? All right, step forward ma'am with your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Seavey, and I am the property owner at 17214 East 23rd Street. And our home was omitted from the photos that were nicely displayed. We are a single-family dwelling on the north side of the 23rd Street. And I would like to know the definition of the justice property of what's planned for there. It is close to a city park, we have many, we have two elementary schools, we have the middle school campus, and we have homes that have children. So I would like a definition of what justice property means.
So there is a proposed preliminary site plan and renderings of the justice campus. However, that is not necessarily a part of this application for rezoning. There's a go-bond committee that is putting together a proposal to submit to city council for the proposed general obligation package. That would include the funding for certain projects, capital improvement projects, including a proposed justice campus. So those documents are available, they are public record, you could seek them out, and I'd absolutely be willing to help you with those. However, because of the nature of the proposed development, we as city staff can't speak to whether or not that's going to be developed at this site. So those renderings, the site plan, are not a part of this application or presentation.
Well, if, if there in fact is going to be, from what I'm hearing, a jail on that property, I am highly opposed for that to be so close to a residential area and in the middle of two elementary schools.
And, and again, that is not necessarily a part of this application. I can certainly provide you with some more information after this meeting, if we can connect.
But, but if the zoning is to allow for that, I oppose.
Thank you very much. Gabe, would you like to address any of that? Or Rick?
Absolutely, I mean, I would like to just clarify that. So this application again is not in regards to a proposed justice campus. This is simply a, an application for a rezoning so that the existing zoning classification better conforms to the current use of the property. As the city advances in the design phase, the architectural firm can base their design on the proposed zoning classification. Again, that does not indicate whether or not the proposed development will, will be developed or not. In regards to the holding facilities that will be housed in a proposed justice campus, those are distinct from jail cells, like a county jail. These holding facilities will only be for processing. And maybe Rick or Jeremy may be able to speak to that better than I can, but that's my understanding, is that it is not a cell, but it's a facility for processing.
Okay, Rick, Jeremy, anything you want to add?
I think, you know, to, in order to try to answer the question, I think the, the current functions that take place across the, the street here at, at police headquarters, if, if this rezoning were to go through, then, then the current, the current functions and operations that, that take place there would be permitted to take place at this property. So I, I, you know, again, obviously, there's, there's still a lot of, a lot of, you know, details and unknowns at this point, but yes, those, that, that is, that is what's contemplated here, is that those operations would be able to take place at, at that property.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Yes, Commissioner.
It does say in the application, both rezoning and replating the subject property will ensure the proposed justice center project is well-planned and consistent of one lot and zoning classification. So it is in their, their writing, that it is that, that's what that petition's for.
Any other questions, concerns? All right, Gabe or Rick, could you clarify that this is a rezoning application only, and what that means differently?
So, yeah, this is not an approval of a particular project. So this is not, obviously, we've talked about what's being proposed, those are proposals. Those can change, those may not happen, there's a lot, as Gabe mentioned, that has to happen for those to actually be approved by council. However, realize as we go through these proposal designs, conceptual designs, the architect needs to know what they're designing against. So we need to make sure that, you know, if we had any other developer come forward with a project, we would expect them to zone it to what it is they need it to be. So we know what codes and specification setbacks, buffers that they would have to meet. And so this is kind of more of a corrective rezoning to make it more in line with what the intent is going to be used for. Understanding, yes, city properties can be operated like churches under any zoning district, but we do need to look at what is this going to be proposed, and what is that architect going to be designing against? We need to make sure that it more aligns with what it actually is being used for. So this is just a rezoning. It can almost be considered more of a corrective rezoning for what it's actually going to be used for, but it's not an approval of an actual project or a site plan or a development plan, because that is yet to be fully determined. Does that help?
Yes, so corrective more than approving any particular project.
Correct.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I'd like, I'd like to state also that we could rezone this residential, and the city can still put up a correction center here. So it doesn't matter what we say and what we do here, it's that the city can do whatever they want, even though it is zone R30. They're just trying to get it down to commercial where it needs to be, because there is commercial stuff on this property. So that's what's going on. What the city does after this, it's up to the city and up to the people set on the city council. So you don't have to talk to them about what's happening. We're just trying to get it corrected to a commercial property, which is what's being done on it right now, commercial.
Ultimately, it'll be decided by the people.
And I understand that, I just don't want to be looking at a correctional facility out my, out my front door. That, that is not something I, I wish for myself or my grandchildren. But I would like to offer, I did see that we closed Adventure Oasis, so maybe that would be a site for a correction facility. Back behind the police station, there is no residential around there. That would not impede anybody's sight and vision, and there wouldn't be no children at risk in that matter.
Thank you. All right, any other questions, concerns? Closing the public hearing, I will entertain a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
All right, I'm first and a second. I will call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chair Wiley.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero to rezone to the correct zoning on case number 24100-26 rezoning at 17200 East Medical Center Parkway and 17203 and 17221 East 23rd Street. Thank you. All right, we now get to be entertained and trained by Jeremy Cofer of the Lauer Law Firm. So we invite all who are listening to stay and learn along with us.
Will you take one of each dozen?
Yes.
Kind of borrowed the clicker. Who's got, you guys have? Oh, it's on there, okay. Oh, look at that, okay. Good evening, I'm, I want to fix this. I'm Jeremy Cofer, I'm the city councillor. This is the, the first time I've been here in, in a little while. So for some of you, I, I'm a new face, for others, you are probably, you know, sick of hearing from me. But
Never.
We are. I'm here tonight, I recognize you've already been here for a couple hours, so I'm, I'm gonna, you know, cut to the chase. We're here tonight, I'm gonna go over resolution number 6975, which is a, a city council resolution that they adopted back in January to essentially sort of, you know, provide some more structure on, on how boards and commissions are appointed and operate. And I want this to be conversational. So what I pass out to you is the actual resolution itself, because I'm not hitting on everything. I'm just sort of hitting on some highlights, and there's another handout that we'll get to in a minute. But if you have any, you know, comments or questions throughout, let's, let's talk about it, so feel free to just jump in. So resolution number 6975 was adopted by the city council on January 2nd of this year. The official title reads, "A Resolution Establishing Standards For The Recruitment And Selection Of Board Members, Establishing Standards For Communication And Establishing Expectations, Duties And Norms Of Behavior For All Appointed City Boards, Commissions And Committees." So one of the things that the council has, you know, has been in the process of doing is sort of streamlining and, and being more transparent with some of, you know, some of the expectations related to boards and commissions. And, and this was, was one step, there's other steps that, that are also happening. But again, we wanted to make sure that not only that, that council did this, but start making sure that the boards and commissions are aware about this as well. So section one of the resolution outlines the process and procedures for the city council to appoint members to boards, commissions, and committees. Since you all are already been appointed, we're just gonna skip over that part. So it's in there, if you want to read, you know, what the process is, but, but that's less of an issue for you, since you're already sitting here. Okay, section two, communications, and for the most part, yes sir.
Okay, so I read here, it says only on one at a time, not two, didn't it used to be two boards at a time?
Tell me where you are.
A, board members can only serve on one city appoint. One A.
One A, okay. Uh, no, that's technically correct.
Okay, so you can only serve on one, not two now?
Well, it, it's a, it's actually always been that way. It's from, yeah.
So it's always been that way?
Yeah, it's, it says, it says it in the char, it says it in the charter. I, I know there are some exceptions, but yes.
Okay.
Well, I was just curious.
Yeah, it hasn't, it, the practice may have evolved over time, but technically, the rule has not changed.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Uh, okay. Moving on, but if you have questions, we can talk about it. Communications, the board or commission should communicate with the city council only through approved minutes, work plans, progress reports, or formal recommendations, resolutions voted on by the board or commission. You know, for you all, that's pretty clear and, and less of an issue in terms of how, how you formally communicate with the council, obviously. As a recommending body, there is a, a process set up and, and that, that, you know, is handled, you know, facilitated by staff. But it also serves as, as a reminder, and we're gonna talk about this again, that, that you all are one body. One body, one, one vote, well, it's, I think that's on the next slide. And so essentially, you, you know, it takes all of you at voting in order to have one voice. And so even if, you know, that, that, that vote or that voice may not always be unanimous, I saw all of them work tonight, but obviously, that's not always the case. But in the end, even if, you know, you, you know, you are not on the prevailing side of an issue or a question or anything like that, in the end, it's, it's the body that's speaking, not any individual members. So. Board and commission chairs shall communicate with the staff liaison on matters related to board and commission's operations and agendas. Again, you, you all have that process down pretty good. And each board and commission shall be assigned a city council liaison who shall serve as the conduit between the board or commission and the city council. So can you guys tell me who is both the staff, officially the staff liaison and the city council liaison? To the planning commission? Huh? Rick? Okay, so you, you're the, you're the staff liaison, and then who, do you know who technically is the city council liaison? Well, that's a city, that's actually, one of the city council members is officially one of the city council members is the city council liaison. Okay, oh, that is, that makes sense, it's council member Wiley, a former colleague of yours. So she is the, officially the city council liaison. So to the extent you had a, let's say you had a, you know, a, a, you know, whether it was a staff issue or, or some other issue, then she's, you know, a, someone that you can talk to on the city council that's been designated as your city council liaison, that makes perfect sense. Uh, okay. Section two.
Jeremy.
Yes, yes, sir.
So these things are like, it doesn't, does it, does it mean board member or the entire board? Or the entire commission? Does that make sense?
It depends on the context. I mean.
Because it's, it's more like official communication, is that what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah.
You can still talk to me.
So officially, so I mean, he, I guess he, here's how I would say, if, if you all, if you, if you all, let's say individually, one of you had, had some sort of issue, I would say your process would be to talk with the chair first. And then depending on what the issue is, the chair would either take it to the staff liaison or the city council liaison. So that's how, does that make sense?
Yeah, I was just trying to, I was just trying to make sure. Because it kept saying board, it's like a group. It's not necessarily, it's a group dynamic, it's not a
It is very much a group dynamic, right. It, but, but, you know, but every once in a while, a, you know, you're all still individuals. So it's not that you're, you know, we're not taking away your individuality. In the end, if anything, if, any sort of official communication position has to come from all of you, right? But if you personally had something, you had a question or an issue or something like that, 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 you know, you had, I would expect you to talk with the chair first. And again, and then depending on what that is, she would then take that. That's not saying that she's speaking for all of you. Just because you have the issue doesn't mean that all of you do. But that's different than saying, let's, you know, while you all don't, for the most part, go in front of the city council, it's, you know, theoretically, at some point, you could decide that there was something that, in addition to your, you know, your recommendation that you felt strongly about. And so you could essentially vote to send the chair or any member to the city council to speak on your behalf on a certain issue. That's, that would be the sort of, you know, one voice, one vote that I'm talking about.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
But if an individual wanted to speak to a city council, they would do it without referencing that they represented the planning commission?
Sure.
That would be the difference.
So we've had that before, right. So it, obviously, you're, you, you all are, you know, may, may want to, to, at some point, speak in front of the city council. So it, it is, you, you are not allowed to say, unless you've been sent by this body, you're not allowed to say you represent the body. Okay? I think there is, is certainly, it's a slippery slope to say, I'm a member of the body, only because it has the potential of sort of adding weight or, or to an uninformed or, to someone who maybe isn't paying, isn't as close attention, might sound like you're speaking for the body, even if you just say, I'm there as a member of the planning commission. So we, you know, it's, it's certainly, I think, the council's preference that, to the extent you want to come speak in, in front of them, that, you know, in your individual capacity, you do that in your individual capacity and don't reference the planning commission or any board or commission unless you have actually been sent by the planning commission to speak on, on your behalf. Does that make sense? That has been, we have had that before. You know, again, you know, members, you all, you know, people who are on boards and commissions tend to be generally more engaged in issues, right? So, so it's not uncommon that you would also, or unusual that you might also want to come and, and speak at, at a, at a city council meeting or something like that. So certainly don't speak on, on, on behalf of the body unless you've been, you know, that's, that's what the body has requested. And, you know, you know, ideally refrain from even, you know, referencing that you do that, even if you want to say, hey, I've been involved with, you know, the city for a long time, or something, you know, sort of vague like that. But we don't want to give, we don't want you to give the impression that you're speaking on behalf of the body unless that is the case. Okay. Okay, and here we are, what I keep getting to, the one body, one voice principle. So that, again, anything, any sort of official communications are, are going to, you know, in the end, whether you vote for it or not, what, you know, whatever the, the, the prevailing vote was, that's, that's what, you know, all the members are bound to. And so it's important that you recognize that. And, and that, you know, again, you recognize that you're, you're one, while you're individual members, in the end, it's, it's you as a body that actually has the power. Yes, sir?
If the new speaker approaches you on a particular issue and you have been in dissent on that vote, is that what you're talking about?
That's one of the situat, yeah, that, that's one of the situations. That, once it's done, it's done. Now, in the end, you know, that's, that's up to you all. And we don't really, I, I have another training that I've done with, with, with you, with this group before, but, but it's not some of you, where we talk about sort of social media and that sort of thing. And, and maybe I'll come back in a, you know, a while and do that one, too. But yeah, I mean, the idea is that in the end, that whatever the vote is, sort of speaks for itself. And, and that, you know, and that it, you, you shouldn't be opining beyond that, really, whether, you know, for or against, that whatever the motion of the vote was, that's what it is. And so, you know, we, we shouldn't be expanding beyond that.
That's very professional, but that's not always the case.
I, I understand that. And that, right. This is why I, we, we, you know, we ask that everyone do the best they can. I understand things happen and people get cornered and, you know, you're at the grocery store or whatever. So this, this is, you know, these are sort of best practices that, that have been put in place to, you know, to try to help, you know, with the professionalism and, and transparency that, that we hope that all the boards and commissions can, can achieve. Okay. Section three. So this whole section is expectation, duties, and norms of behavior. It's obviously broken up into a variety of different spots. So one of the subsections is, is the training of members. So what this resolution does is it implements an onboarding program for new members regarding meeting procedures, sunshine law, ethics, et cetera. It, as, as going through it, there was, you know, sort of a, and this may evolve over time. Right now, what the, 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 the plan is, is that as new members come on to boards and commissions, that they're essentially, hopefully going to be sent to a, a city officials' training seminar that my firm puts on every spring. So what, one of the handouts that I passed out, obviously that's from '24, that's not from the upcoming one. But we do, the, the, the training that we do here in town is over at NPR, Midwest Public Risk, which is by the Independence Event Center. And they've got a great facility over there. And we go through all of the, essentially all of the topics that, that the council wants, boards and commissions. Now, it's, it's designed, it's called the City Officials', you know, Training Seminar. It has, you know, planning commission members, city administrators, city clerks, you know, other sorts of, you know, city staff and elected officials. So it's, it's broad. It is, there's, it's, it's intense. We do them on, on Fridays. And so what you've got is just an agenda that shows the topics and that we presented on last year and how that looks. So once we, we get those dates set, which usually happens in like February, we'll, we'll notify the city clerk. And, and her plan is to then notify all of the, the staff liaisons so that all the boards and commissions can be notified. So again, this is something, you know, that, over time, the city may also develop its, its own program that, you know, you know, in addition to or in lieu of. But this is something that, you know, is already in place. And, and like I said, we do, we do, we do it here in town every year. And so it's, it's fairly convenient for most people. And so that's, that's the program, that's the plan right now. You know, again, that may change over time. But the idea is that, you know, we want, that, you know, the council wants, wants the boards and commission members to, to have information and to, and to be informed and to be able to, to make the best decision. Obviously, you know, there's, you all are here for a reason. And, and it's, you know, the better, you know, informed and the, the more, you know, you have available to you, you know, in terms of resources, then the, you know, the, the better you can do your jobs. And that's what the council wants is, is they want to give the tools to the boards and commissions that they need in order to do the job. Because obviously, they can't, they've got a lot going on, they can't do everything that you, that the boards and commissions are also doing. That, that, that it wouldn't work. And so they want, they want to give the, the boards and commission members the, the resources they need to do the best they can. Okay, duties. So the duties of, again, this is all from, from the resolution. The duties of the presiding officer, which is the, the board or commission chair, is following. Acts as meeting facilitator, maintains the tone of civility during the debate, ensure the public has a meaningful opportunity to participate, and that meetings operate fairly and impartially, ensure the board or commission's questions and discussions are germane to the issues presented. So as I think you all see, the, you know, the, the point of the chair is, is to keep, make sure that, that the meetings stay on track, that you, you know, you, you conduct the business that you need to conduct, keep, you know, people in check when they need to be, when they need to be in check, and, and to keep things going. So Chair Wiley does an excellent job, job with that. And so I think, you know, you all have a good example of that. Then generally, the board, the duties of the board and commission members are to ensure the board has a quorum at all meetings and commit submission time to ensure regular and punctual attendance. That has never, to my knowledge, never been an issue with the planning commission. But we, we have had, you know, those issues with other boards and commissions in the past. And so again, we want to make sure that, that, you know, people who are on, you know, want to be there and, and have the, the capacity to be engaged and to be, yeah, and to, and to be ready to go. Be prepared, attentive, participate, abide by the rules of procedure and city and state laws, and to notify the staff liaison as soon as they learn they will not be able to attend a meeting and have any changes to contact information. Again, not, not really, not an issue with you all, but we, we, you know, also part of it is, for some boards and commissions that meet less frequently, it's, you know, where it's sometimes those, you know, it's sort of they fall out of practice. And so that, those kind of things can happen. But, but luckily, we don't have that issue with planning commission. Norms of behavior. Board and commission members are encouraged to share their experience and knowledge with new members. You know, that's something we, you know, that for those, you know, some of you have, have been up there for a long time, some of you, you know, less so. And so it is helpful when, when new people are coming on to, you know, let, you know, sort of help them, hey, how do you, you know, keep track of things and notebooks? And what do you look at? And where, you know, where do you, you know, have you looked at this online? And that, and, you know, what, have you gone to a training or something like that? So, you know, we definitely, the council wants to encourage, encourage more experienced members to help out newer members. Board and commission members should treat all city employees with respect. Board and commission members should be mindful of arguing or debating the merits of staff's professional judgment. Board and commission members should not use language or communication methods that a reasonable person would find humiliating, intimidating, hostile, or offensive. So again, to the extent, you know, at some point you have an issue, you know, I, I would encourage you to, to not, you know, air it out here, to talk with the chair and, and let her, you know, take that either to the, the staff liaison or the council liaison if it needs to be addressed. We, we want to, you know, put on, you know, make sure that we're, we're up here, we're, you know, representing the citizens and that, you know, it's a, it's a professional, productive process that we're, that we're going through for, for planning commission meetings and all other board and commission meetings. Board and commission interaction with staff during meetings, this is sort of a continuation. Curisism of staff should be made in private. Members may not direct or issue orders to staff. Questions should be directed to the appropriate city staff. We've already kind of talked about that. All appointed members of city boards, commissions should be mindful of the city charter prohibition regarding interference with administration. So that's the quote from the resolution. To give you a little more context, essentially what that means is, the way that our city charter is set up, that, you know, you've got a, a, a council, city manager form of government. And so for the most part, most, you know, the administration, actual administration of the city falls under all the, under the city manager, right? And, and while you all are essentially an extension of the city council. And so that's where, you know, we, we have to be mindful of that, just like we are with the actual city council and the other boards and commissions, that, you know, to the extent they have issues or concerns, we just make sure that those flow through the, you know, the appropriate personnel so that we just sort of don't have, you know, we want to make sure that, that everybody, you know, across the board is in the right lane and that, you know, if there are issues, that they're addressed appropriately. So with that, I know that was pretty quick. So that's contact info, that's, that's my email. And then Lindsay Goldman, who's our, the law department paralegal. Lindsay isn't involved with the planning commission, but any of you that, that paid attention during the charter review process, she was essential to going, to going through that and, and was, was a big help there. But if, you know, if you ever, you know, to the extent something would come up related to, you know, law department, those, those are our contact information. Anybody have any general questions, comments, or concerns?
I have another question.
Really more for Rick, probably, or liaison. Um, I had, since we're an extension of the city council, I had a city council person call me about one of the city council issues that we had already voted on, wanted to know what our vote was and why. And recalling that was pretty difficult. Is there, I just wonder why he didn't ask you guys. So I just wondered, is there an easy way to go back from a planning commission standpoint and look up previous votes?
Yes, we, we do keep electronic records of all our minutes and all our votes. So, you know, if anybody had a question regarding, you know, a project that may have been approved two years ago, can we go back and see? Yeah, we can. I mean, we also have the, the video recordings. But we also would look at the minutes. And, you know, sometimes we are asked questions about, well, why did, why did they vote this way or something?
Right.
And then really, the only, the best answer we can give them is based on the concerns that maybe a particular member had would be the reason. But understand, too, you know, somebody on this commission might vote no, you don't necessarily have to sit here and tell us why you're voting no.
Right.
And vice versa. And so sometimes we're kind of left to, you know, giving a, you know, this is why we believe, but it's not necessarily definitive as to why they voted no. But that's the only resources that we have is the video along with the minutes and the voting tally.
And then, then, there's been some, well, I think one of the issues that has arisen sometimes when we vote against something, or not to approve it, we do not recommend it, is, is that it then passes along city council, which is perfectly their right. But we've often wondered how our reasons get communicated on. Is it only through the council giving their time and attention to watching the minutes?
So really, it's in the packet that we give them the minutes.
Okay.
And, and the vote. And so that is what they will read. They will read the staff report, they will read the recommendations, they will read the comments, because the minutes have comments from the public as well. And so that is what they will see, that's what they'll see in their packet. And obviously, a council member can go back to the YouTube video and, and see in person, you know, see what it looked like and, you know, if there's anything. Obviously, the minutes are, it's a good representation, but it's not every exact word that anybody, everybody says. And so it's not a transcript in that sense. So if a council member does so choose to, they can go back and look at those videos. But it's not required, and that's not what they get in their packet.
And when you present, because I've been to many where you get up and you talk about something before the council.
Correct.
Sometimes you share that we approved it or, or didn't, and sometimes the reasons and other times.
So generally, when I give my presentation, I will give that it was or was not approved. Really only if a council member asks, you know, why that was, then I will give them, based on the minutes, based on what, you know, we experience here, what my thought is as to why they were concerned about it. But it's not necessarily a definitive answer to why each particular person voted the way they did. But I usually don't answer that question unless I'm asked that question.
Okay.
So.
Okay. That just helps. I just kind of wanted to know what's communicated past here to the next level.
Sure. And obviously, I guess, maybe it's not obvious, but, but the, the packets that Rick's referring to are available online. So anyone can go on there. I mean, if you wanted to see exactly what the council is seeing, you know, you can see it in, you know, on, on each staff report, it tells you which council meetings those will be considered at. And so if you go on to the, you know, the, the page, the city webpage that has the, all of the agendas on it, and you click on there, I mean, you gotta click a couple times to get actually to the information. But yeah, the, everything the council sees is, is, is available to everybody else.
All right, Dan?
Yeah. So what you're telling us is that sometime in February, we'll have a training seminar, and it'll be set up similar to this agenda that you gave us?
Yes, it won't be, so we do them in, I'm sorry, I don't, maybe I may have said February, but I think I said we set the dates. And what I meant was, we set the dates, we will set the dates in February. The training seminars occur, so we do them after the April municipal elections. And so they occur in late, in, in late April and early May. We typically do the NPR, the independence one is usually the very first one we do. And so that will typically be like the, probably the third, if I had to guess, it'll be like the third week in April, is, is probably when we'll do it. But yeah, one, we'll know for sure what those dates are. And yes, it will generally be set up like that. That was just to give you an example, to say, here's what, you know, here's how we do these. We've been doing them, you know, that way for, for 10 years. And so again, at, at some point, the, the, you know, the city may have And so again, at, at some point, the, the, you know, the city may have come up with a different program. But until they, until they do, uh, and like I said, we already have city, you know, elected officials and other staff, you know, have, uh, often, you know, usually come to our, uh, training program anyway. And it's just sort of there and it's, it was, uh, something that they want to utilize right now. So yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll figure, we'll know in February what those dates are officially. But the, and there are other, there will be other options in terms of other, you know, some other dates and locations. But we only do one in independence and it'll, that one will be, like I said, probably the third week in April.
The one in 2022 was April 23rd.
There you go. Okay, thank you very, you were there, right? Excellent, thank you very much. See, I'm, I'm pretty much right on track.
I got a question for Rick. Rick, or everything we send on to city council, should it be voted on or should it go through, can it go through consent agenda?
So it can go through consent agenda and you are still voting on the consent agenda. It's just, the difference is it's not something that we will actively give you a, a staff report on unless it's requested to be pulled out.
So we can vote something down and send it to, send it on and then you guys can put it on the consent agenda even though we voted it down?
He, he means the council consent agenda.
Consent agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So it was, so no questions would be asked or anything?
Well, I mean.
I mean, I mean, I'm trying, I, I, to something like that we did here and it went through consent agenda. I'm surprised that nobody said anything and it went right on through.
Yes, um, the council has the purview of doing that, yeah, I mean, they, they can.
I don't know who, who determines what goes on the consent agenda or not.
So typically, if you're talking about like, uh, STRs, those would go on a consent agenda.
Okay.
And it would be up to a council member to pull that out.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Which, they do, I mean, they, sometimes.
Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. It would be up to.
Okay, that's just curious.
The body.
All right, Jeremy, I'm going to ask one of those can of worm questions.
Okay.
Because it has come up. Can you give me a legal definition or maybe a help to all of us? Because I struggle with this. Is that word impartial of maybe some of the behaviors, facial cues, whatever, that will help us to remain or appear more impartial during the hearing part?
Sure. So, so first, let me say that obviously you all, you know, when, when, you know, you all live in the community, you know things that are happening, you certainly get a, you know, a packet that is, you know, has a lot of information. So it's, it's not unreasonable that you come into a meeting with, with, you know, a, that you're already leaning a certain direction, right? And that's okay and that's human, we can't stop that. What the, 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 the goal and the idea behind, you know, remaining impartial is, I would say, sort of twofold. One, that you keep an open mind and that you recognize you haven't heard all the information, right? You haven't, so, you know, you haven't actually, well, you have a, a staff report, you haven't, you know, haven't heard what staff, you know, has to say beyond that. You haven't heard from the applicant, you haven't heard from people who will want to speak for and against. So you remain open minded and you haven't just said, you know, I, I know this, I've made, I've, you know, I've read, I've looked in the packet and, and I'm, I, I made my decision, right? So that's part of, of remaining impartial is remaining open minded. In the end, you may, may say, yep, that's, I'm still where I thought I was going to be and that's fine. Uh, but you, you didn't just start off there, you kept an open mind and you heard all the information and then you made your final decision. The second part of that is, you know, essentially make, doing what you can to not, uh, uh, you know, receive, you know, other outside information beyond what is presented here, right? So there, there, there's a, you know, a, a process and, and rules set up for the, the type of information you all receive it, for the way you receive it. And so, you know, the, the idea is that you don't, you know, go out on your own and start, you know, investigating things and talking with people, uh, that, you know, you know, that you essentially, to, you know, to the best of your ability, that you only really, you know, you utilize the information that, that is presented here, that's in the packet, that's at the public hearing and that's what you make your, your, that's what you base your decision on, that you're not, you know, sort of using outside, you know, outside information that isn't a part of that process. So I'd say that's sort of the second, you know, part of remaining impartial is, is utilizing what's presented here you officially. Yes, sir?
Right, right off the bat, when I first came on this commission, I went out to a property, a book that I wasn't interested in quite and, and the people who, who owned the property, nobody was there and I didn't want to know what the hell I was doing.
Sure.
Of course, I introduced myself, I introduced myself and then go and find the other commission. But I didn't ask any detailed questions.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. And, and, and those things are going, tho- those situations are, are going to happen, right? I mean, I, I, I get, you know, I, again, we, you know, there, there is a line between making sure that you all are, are, you know, doing, doing your jobs or doing your due diligence to make sure that you're making the right decision. And then they're sort of going rogue. And, and so as far as I'm concerned, you know, part of, part of being, you know, remaining impartial is, is not going rogue and, and not doing your, you know.
Not trying to do their job.
Not trying to do their, right, not, and that's certainly right, not trying to do staff's job. Uh, and, and, you know, again, relying on, on the official information that is presented through the process. Because, you know, again, in the end, what, what, you know, you all are recommending body, what the council is going to see is essentially the record of this proceeding, right? And so, you know, it's not going to, you know, so to the extent you go off and, and do your own thing and, and none of that's going to be in there because none of that's going to be a part of the record. And so, you know, the council to, to, you know, the question from the chair about, you know, them understanding why you're making the decision, to the extent, you know, they can, that's what's in, that's what's in the record. And so we want to make sure that that record is sort of as pure as possible. Uh, and, and so between that and again, keeping, keeping an open mind so that, that, you know, you haven't, until, until you voted that, you know, you know, until that, the gavel, the gavel bangs at the public hearing closed, which means you've, you know, essentially heard everything, that that's when you make your final official decision, you know, in your head and in your heart. Uh, and up until then, you've kept an open mind and listened to, to what, you know, staff and, and the property owner and constituents had to say, and then you made your decision. So is that?
Really helpful, thank you.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? All right. That was great, thank you.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
I will just remind everybody, you have, uh, the training available online if you haven't finished it until December 31st. So. With that, I'm going to say happy Thanksgiving and most likely a Merry Christmas at this point, since we will probably not meet in December. Uh, Rick, you will keep us surprised if that changes.
We will, yes.
And we can come by what day to pick up our Christmas gifts?
I'll, I'll talk to Miranda about that.
All right. With that, we are adjourned. Have a great and safe week, y'all.
Thank you.